Hey, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council Monday, October 22nd, 2018, to order. We will have a special Pledge of Allegiance today. The Southeast County Young Marines of the Marine Corps Color Guard, Corporal Docnell, Corporal Neely, Corporal Miller, Corporal Robertson, and two Corporals Matthias. Please come to the podium and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Out on colors.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Sure was an honor from the Honor Guard. Very special. Can we have the Council roll call, please?
Mayor Vera Papa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sastarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Maslavich.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. The approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolution ordinances by motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Do we have some at this time, or any? Looking to my left, looking to my right. I see none at this time.
Mayor Vera Papa, if I could just read into the record that there was communication distributed this afternoon by myself regarding item I. There were two corrections made on page two of resolution and of page two of the staff report. Just changing a word had an extra "O" in it, so we removed that. We also received communication from the city manager. Councilmember Moore had questions that staff answered, and that's been distributed to the council and has been made available to the public. Thank you.
Okay, still noted. At this time, we have some presentations. 2018 Red Ribbon Naval Weapons Station. Can I call upon Young Marine Sergeant Connor Lynch, please? Can you go to the podium, please? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I have memory max. I want to thank the City Council members for giving us this opportunity to receive a Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Young Marines Program is a national nonprofit youth organization for boys and girls ages eight to the completion of high school. We teach character building through self-discipline, teamwork, and leadership. The primary focus of the Young Marine Program is drug demand reduction, or as we call it, DDR. Red Ribbon Week is a very important time of year for us, not only as a unit but as a nationwide program. We are approximately 9,000 members around the country that reach out to their communities year-round with the message of a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And these proclamations support our war on drugs. It's an honor to be here. Thank you again for this opportunity and for your support on this very serious issue.
And thank you. Okay, I'd like to call upon the Seal Beach Police Department for October 2018 Pink Patch Program. I'd like to call Community Service Officer Dominic Cerobia.
Good evening. The Pink Patch was started from an idea from Sergeant Steve Bowles, who is now our commander, back in 2013, to raise awareness for all who have been affected by cancer in law enforcement. The charity that we currently support is the National Law Enforcement Cancer Support Foundation, and last year we raised about $3,500, which was donated back to the Cancer Support Foundation. Back a little history, after our patch in 2014, in the California Police Chiefs Magazine, there was an article about us, and that sparked interest with other agencies. And now it's grown to over 350 agencies across the country, as well as a couple international from here, maybe Australian Federal Police. Also, there are fire departments, medical first responders, and some private security departments that I've found out also have created a Pink Patch, and they donate to a cancer charity of their choice. But most of it is all to raise awareness and money for cancer support. All my time in the Pink Patch events that I go to, be it up at Hollywood Sign, State Capitol, I was recently just up there at the State Capitol, is all volunteer. And one of my main goals is to keep Seal Beach represented at all, anytime possible. And I have left you our Pink Patch, as well as our challenge coin. We created a surfboard challenge coin.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for your time again, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your services.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Orange County Sanitation District Project Updates. I'd like to call upon Rob Thompson, Assistant General Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what's going on at the Orange County Sanitation District. I would like to also recognize Director Deaton, who's a member of our Board of Directors, and Alternate Director Maslavich. They provide great leadership and support for our agency, so thank you very much. I'd also like to recognize a local boy made good, Lorenzo Tyner, who is also an Assistant General Manager for Administration at the Sanitation District. So with that, Orange County Sanitation District is original wastewater collector and treater. We treat all of north-central Orange County, but our mission is to collect all the wastewater, treat all the wastewater, and now to recycle all the wastewater. So I like to think of it as we take all this enriched water and turn it into useful products, instead of just blasting it out to the ocean after it's been treated. So where we are and what we are all about, we have 396 miles of sewers around this north-central part of the county. You can see our service area there on the slide. We have 479 square miles of area, and 185 million gallons of water every day come to us in an enriched format, and we turn it into a very clean format with energy and fertilizer as a byproduct. So we try and be very environmentally conscious and turn those resources back into useful good for the people we serve. We have 15 pump stations along the coast. That's kind of what I'm going to talk to you about, and how it affects your city here. And we have two treatment plants, one in Fountain Valley and one in Huntington Beach. Tonight on your agenda, there's an item about an odor control station. We try and jointly partner with all the local agencies that we work with, your city being one. Whenever there is sewage, some people actually believe there's a foul odor that comes with that. I only smell money and the opportunity to move forward, but some people don't appreciate it. So we do partner with cities and look for ways to reduce that nuisance level. One of the ways we can do that is through some chemical addition. It does a good job of removing the odorants from the water before they can be released. So that's an opportunity that's on your agenda tonight. We pay the cost for the chemicals. There's a benefit to your city. As the sewer sewage is flowing through, it's having its odors reduced when it reaches our pump station and enters our regional system, then it's less odorous for us all. So it's a benefit that we provide on a regional basis. But there's a lot of infrastructure that's going to be renewed, and it will have an impact on your city. You can see from the slide, we started a little north of your city from La Palma, Buena Park, all the way down through Los Alamos into the edge of your city. There's going to be a significant amount of work to upsize and refurbish four major sewer projects. So you can see them there in orange, in the Anaheim area and Buena Park area. There will be traffic impacts. We've been working for about two years with not only your city but the five other cities that have been involved, and OCTA, to make sure that all of these projects are timed so that they work together. We don't all close roads and then point cars at each other's projects. So it has been a work in progress. A lot of our work has been delayed somewhat, behind the 405. Primarily, as you move south, away from the collections jobs, we have a pump station at the corner of Westminster and Seal Beach Boulevard. It's a major pump station for us. That's going to be completely renewed. We are going to rebuild the pump station. It will have a lower wet well than it currently does. That will necessitate the need to completely rebuild. But when we rebuild, we'll also add odor control facilities at the site, and we will renew the force mains, which go all the way down Westminster Boulevard. Again, that work on the Westminster Boulevard segment will be timed after OCTA finishes their work. So there's a lot of work upcoming. A lot of it's off in the future, and they're done in parts and pieces so that there's always a way for cars to get through. You can see in the fall of 2020 to 2023, we'll be tearing up Los Alamos Boulevard. That has two sewers in it that come down. They're being upsized. Across Westminster Boulevard, that's from 2020 to 2022. There are two force mains there. They're both being replaced. And then off in the future, we intend to upsize the sewer that's in Seal Beach Boulevard. Couple that with the lower pump station we have at the corner of Westminster and Seal Beach Boulevard, and we hope to eventually be able to actually abandon the pump station at what we call West Side Pump Station in Rossmore. It's just on the northern edge of your city. That will allow us to take away what is a point of failure. If there's ever a power outage or anything that goes wrong with pumping systems, there could be a spill. But with gravity sewers, gravity always works. Here's a rendering or two of the upcoming pump station. We intend to mimic as we can the look of this city hall. It should be a nice aesthetic improvement to the city. And we put a lot of work into our construction outreach. We don't wait for construction to start. We start our outreach in design. We want to work not only with the city staff but with the residents, understand the needs, understand the limitations we need to put on our contractors. Do they want day work, night work? Do they want us to go real fast, work 24/7? Or do they want us to work only during the day? We try and understand what the community needs, wants, desires, and then design and work around that. During construction, we don't drop the ball. We keep reaching out. We keep informing people every step of the way. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Looks like a nice facility you'll be building.
I have one, just real quick. I appreciate you reaching out to us so early in the process. Can you just, for the public's knowledge, just talk about the pumping station, you know, purpose? I know it pumps. Which way does it go? Does it go north? Does it go south? Does it go east? Does it go west? And how that kind of works in layman's terms, as briefly as you could, please?
So in general, the sewer lines are nothing more than subterranean rivers. So the water's coming and is following the riverbed, just like the river coming down to Long Beach. So the water wants to channelize, follow the river route, reach the Seal Beach. Well, that's not where the pump station is. We have to pump it over to Fountain Valley. So we lift it up and push it across a grade line, and then we can let it drain toward Fountain Valley. So it's a matter of getting the river flow into the right riverbed for treatment. So we're on the Santa Ana River. All the other rivers have to be pumped across to that.
So it goes down, then it goes back up, and then it goes down again?
Pump stations keep lifting to get it across.
Anything else, Mr. Moore?
The chemicals that are used to prevent the odor, is there any harmful aspects to those at all?
They're very benign chemicals. In fact, one of them is literally milk of magnesia. What they do is change the character of the water, and they alter the biology. It's not that they're a horrid biocide that, you know, can off-gas. They're benign salts in general. They dissolve readily in water. They stay there, and then you put them in the water. They change the pH or a character of the water, and the bacteria that cause H2S, which is that foul rotten egg smell, won't grow.
Is that kind of used at other stations?
Worldwide, everywhere, for years.
The dosing station? How big is that tank that you had in that picture?
They vary in size. I'd say anywhere from five feet in diameter to 10 feet in diameter, maybe five, six feet high.
A big shed?
Correct.
I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure, Rob, to sit on Sand District. You've really taught me a lot. The science is incredible, and I just think that anybody in the public or at the DA should just go down and see what you do. They take all of the sewage, and then they redo most of it. And we're getting to, what, 99% now? And turn it back over to the Water Department. So you do a great job. You've done a yeoman's job in educating me, so I thank you very much.
We give a great tour for anybody who's interested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next presentation, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Chief Miller, I think will help us with that.
Yes, I'm going to have Sergeant Henderson come up.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Sergeant Michael Henderson. I'm the Operations Administrative Sergeant for the Police Department, and one of my responsibilities is oversight of our emergency services program. We're here tonight to give you an update on our efforts with the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Just a quick overview of our agenda. We're going to talk about the project initiation, how we've developed the plan. And really, the big news tonight, and why we're here before you, is we're happy to announce that we have completed the draft of the plan, and we'll have it available for public review beginning tomorrow for 30 days. What we have done here is create a hazard mitigation plan, the first hazard mitigation plan for the city of Seal Beach. And what this plan will allow us to do, it will open the door for us to have access to grant funding to assist us with mitigation actions that we can do to help prepare the city in event of a natural disaster. The Seal Beach Police Department, including myself and Emergency Services Coordinator Julia Klasby, have been the project leaders on this, and we hope it'll be a valuable document for the city. As you may know, in December of 2015, we applied and received a grant from FEMA for approximately $72,000 to hire a contractor to help us create this plan. Our obligation was a 25% in-kind matching, and I'm happy to announce we've met that goal as well. In May of this year, we conducted a competitive process through the RFP process to select a consultant to assist us with this. And of the seven proposals we received, we selected the company Placeworks to assist us with creating this plan. At this time, I'd like to call up the consultant who has assisted us with this plan, Aaron Fannensstiel, Senior Associate. Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, Mike. Greetings, councilmembers, mayor, city manager, and city staff members, many of who participated in this process. So I'll quickly walk you through what we've done. You know, when we talk about emergency management, you hear the four components of it, which is preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. And really, tonight, what we're really going to focus on is that mitigation piece. When we talk about hazard mitigation and really what this plan is trying to accomplish, it's really focused on how we can save lives and investments within the community, how you avoid disruption of essential services like sewer service, reducing your response and recovery costs. And ultimately, these actions help lead you down the path of sustainability. And so there's a pretty straightforward process that we've gone through so far. We initiated the project early on. The planning process was really where we came into the community, not only to meet with a group of city staff members. We held meetings and talked about the components of the plan. But then we also had public meetings. We did four meetings throughout different parts of the community to engage the public and get some feedback and input. And felt like we had a really good process and received a lot of good feedback. Part of the internal workings of what our team really helped the community do was really to understand the risk and conducted a risk assessment. And part of that developed hazard mitigation strategy that we worked on with the Committee of City Staff Departments. And then the plan maintenance piece is really about what do you do with this plan for five years? These plans have a five-year shelf life. After five years, if you haven't updated it, then you are no longer eligible for this funding source that would now become available once you've adopted the plan. And the compilation and adoption piece is really kind of where we're at. We're starting that tonight. So part of the process is to go forward with a public review period, which we're going to conduct a 30-day review period. Any comments we receive from the public, we'll address those, and then the plan will be submitted to California Office of Emergency Services for their review, and then up to FEMA for their review. And once FEMA has approved the plan, then it would come back down to City Council for final adoption. The committee that we conducted four meetings with included many of these departments. This is just a snapshot of who was in the room, but we did have a lot of external stakeholders that joined us as well, key individuals that Emergency Services Coordinating Staff had identified that would be critical to have as part of the decision-making process. We conducted those meetings between May and July of 2018. And then we had, as I indicated, four meetings for public outreach between May and September at various places. In addition to that, we also did an online survey, where we received 189 responses. That's actually a pretty good turnout for online surveys when it comes to these types of projects. Unfortunately, these are not the most glamorous of projects, but still nonetheless, a fairly good turnout. And the top three hazards, because we did ask the question, what are the top three hazards? The top three responses we saw were earthquakes and liquefaction, flooding and coastline disturbances, and tsunami. We also found that 78% of respondents have been impacted by flooding and coastline disturbance hazards in the past. So really good information. What it helps us to do is to also identify, and part of what we worked on with the plan, were what are the hazards that the community is concerned about? We came up with what we call five groups. And within those groups, we had a number of hazards. Coastal inundation, extreme weather, seismic hazards, hazardous materials release, and fire were the five groups. And then within those, coastal flooding and storms, drought, flood, which include dam and levee failure, seismic hazards, again, hazardous material release, erosion, severe weather, including wind, heat, and tornado, sea level rise, tsunami, fire, and tree mortality. And so those were the hazards identified, and that have been described in the plan. And then one of the aspects of this process is you also have to understand where do those hazards fall from a priority standpoint? And so we went through a process to identify where these particular hazards were as far as priority were concerned. And we also streamlined that a little bit by using the hazard grouping and indicating that seismic hazards, extreme weather, and coastal inundation were really the three main groups of hazards that were of greatest concern. And if you look at a lot of the survey responses we received, those are very much in line with what survey respondents were saying as well. So here's the process again. We're starting the 30-day public review period. If we have any revisions, we'll address those, send it up to CALOES and FEMA and start that review process. And then again, once that's approved by FEMA, then it'll come back to City Council for final adoption. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
And I'll stay around as long as you need.
No, I was lucky enough to go to some of the outreach meetings.
I remember.
There were interesting comments, interesting people, and interesting issues.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the work that you've done to put this together. Hopefully, we'll get an approval from FEMA.
There is no hope. You will.
I just wanted to say thank you too for canvassing the city and then many different residents and getting all the concerns. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Will the report come back to us after any changes are made before being submitted after the public review period?
We can. We can share with you what revisions were made post the public review period.
I think that would be wise for us to know what's being submitted.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you list specific areas or bridges that could be affected?
So one of the things we did with the risk assessment is we created a critical facilities inventory of all of the key facilities that the Planning Committee identified and use that as the basis for the risk assessment. So that, using that inventory, as well as a lot of the GIS mapping that we have for the city, we were able to identify which facilities may be at greater risk.
And that's in the report?
It is. It's summarized in the report. The specific details of each facility, we did keep confidential because we did not want to overshare information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was a very good presentation.
All right, thank you. Oh, and contact information if you need any.
Okay, we'll move to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire City Council, and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. I guess we'll start with our first.
Good evening. Linda Kruger, Old Town. I wanted to bring up a couple of things about the parking. I'm on 8th Street, and for the past 14 years, I have been coming in front of the Planning Department and also the City Council regarding the parking. The parking on 8th Street has been a real challenge for all of the residents. And there was a question brought up about why? What happened? Well, 14 years ago, well, I've been a resident for 39 years. So before, so when I first moved in, there was Jack in the Box. So between 8th Street, Main Street, on PCH, there was Jack in the Box, which had their own parking lot for their employees, parking for people coming and going. Next to it was a Shell gas station. Well, the Shell gas station 14 years ago went away, and they built the little shopping center where the Coffee Bean is and four or five other little shops. But they didn't make any plans for parking. So the employees that are working at the Coffee Bean at 5:00 in the morning and goes till whatever time, 9:00 at night or whatever, and the other employees at You Break, We Fix, and the Yogurt Place, and the jeweler and stuff, where are they going to park? Well, 8th Street, of course. And amongst those, then we have was a grocery store, and then it became Rip Curl. Well, Rip Curl has their own parking lot, but they only have like two employees. Okay, well, they park in their own parking lot. But then we have the other merchants all the way down Main Street, the Abbey, the McFusion, the Nail Place, Charlo Chicken. We have so many merchants that don't have parking, or they don't know. We have so many merchants that don't have parking or they don't know there is parking for the merchants. And it becomes a real challenge. And it's really hard for the people on Eighth Street and to be having the new equipment for reading license plates and stuff. If we could just get some of the police parking enforcement's coming down, tagging the cars that have been parked for two weeks, they only move from one side to the other. We don't get police parking enforcement coming down the street to even check on cars. And to have no parking for residents till 10:00 at night, I think that's really unreasonable. And it's not fair to the residents. And we have the people from Seventh Street. The shops there, the boat place, the riggers, they park on Seventh Street or Eighth Street. They don't even try to park on Seventh. Seventh Street Garage loads up both sides of, all the way around. It's not, it's really not fair for us residents on Eighth Street. So I'm really hoping that something is going to happen and it'll happen soon because it's just a challenge. It's horrible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Ed Schrader. I live in Old Town. Can you hear me okay? I'm here tonight because I just finished reading the Navy's latest environmental assessment report for the proposed expansion of the ammunition pier. And a little background on the ammunition pier. The weapons station was built back in 1944 when the area was undeveloped with a few thousand residents. The area has since grown into a heavily populated area with over 250,000 residents and is evolving into a non-industrial area. The problem is that the munitions loading and offloading is embedded within Seal Beach and sits within a stone's throw of public areas. As I look back at the letters I've written, the discussions I've had at the various meetings and the latest report, I have a real fear for our city. To highlight a few items, first and foremost is our safety. The naval weapons station is supposed to operate under Navy safety guidelines. The worst-case scenarios occurred in our city. In this latest report, the Navy admits it cannot and does not plan to operate within normal Navy safety guidelines for weapon stations. I want to repeat that. The Navy admits it cannot and does not plan to operate within normal Navy safety guidelines for weapon stations. The Navy dismissed our concerns on questions of safety buffers stating that they operate under a quote "safety exemption or waiver." This exemption or waiver is self-granted by the Navy. So they have this set of standards and then they summarily dismiss those standards. We have no idea what risk we're being exposed to, but just common sense, those boats, the munitions going on and off of them, they're within a stone's throw of many public areas. And the Navy clearly admits in the report that it's required to have thousands of acres of buffer zone. It admits that the configuration poses safety and security concerns. And to make matters worse, part of the mitigation issue is the base sits on the Newport-Inglewood Fault. Recent studies show that if we have an earthquake, that can drop three feet instantaneously with a major earthquake. Also, a major threat that was not addressed in the report is another common sense item, container ships. A terrorist could easily hijack a container ship and steer it into the bay and cause catastrophic damage. The Navy focused primarily on little civilian boats that can't do nearly the damage. The other issue of concern was privacy rights. The Navy ignored my questions on the CBS News report that civilian calls, texts, and emails outside of military bases are intercepted, thereby violating federal and state privacy rights. By ignoring that question, it's a tacit admission that the Navy illegally intercepts nearby residents and visitors' calls, texts, and emails. Third area that was glossed over was the blight that's going to be created. The Navy provided new details on the ammunition pier and area. They want two warships, 185 feet tall, that can go end to end at the same time. That's like two 12-story buildings going in and out of the bay once a week. How do they justify this? They conclude that the changes are consistent with Seal Beach. They say we're military industrial. I want to know, when did Seal Beach change from Mayberry by the Sea to military industrial? To get to this gross mischaracterization, the Navy defined our community as heavily urbanized and part of the Long Beach, Long Beach industry area. To add further insult, this is what the Navy thinks of our bay. This is a quote. Public views of Anaheim Bay are primarily military industrial nature. Views include chain-link fences topped with barbed wire, power poles, a wharf, cranes, barges, utilitarian concrete structures, guard towers, and Navy patrol craft. Given the industrialized and military use nature of Anaheim Bay and surrounding land areas.
You have 30 seconds.
The project site is not a component of any scenic vista from any public roadway or viewing spot. They've wrapped up the, they've glossed our alternatives. And a bit of history, 1990 city council had the courage to stand up to the Navy and they backed off. Even Dana Rohrbacher opposed that expansion. I request that the city council pass a resolution that demands immediate details of the safety waiver that the ammunition pier is supposedly operating under and that it oppose the expansion of the ammunition pier until the Navy can prove its operations don't danger our residents. And finally, that resolution demands that the Navy disclose the extent of its illegal interception of calls, texts, and emails. I challenge the council to be bold. Be remembered as the council that held the Navy accountable to protect our town. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone else?
Hello, city staff and city council. Peter Amundson, Seal Beach. Want to give a shout out and congratulations to Saber Beach on their 20th anniversary of keeping our beaches clean. This weekend, there were over 600 people attending Saber Beach. A lot of buses coming from even as far as Pasadena. I saw several Leo clubs from Long Beach and even the San Gabriel Valley. And I think they're doing a great job. And if Saber Beach keeps it up, we're, our beaches have a clean future. So I want to give them a shout out and a thank you to Steve Mason and the whole crew.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, staff, the public, Seth Heeker, Old Town. A pleasure to be before you. I wanted to comment on the resolution establishing a choose civility program. I think that's lovely. I think it's very important. I know I certainly come up to this day at times and I'm very emotional. I know that other members here also get emotional. I think emotions come with passion and with commitment to a community. I do also believe in civility. And as PM Forney outlines in his book, The 21 Rules of Civility, it is possible to have mutual respect, teamwork, professionalism, honest and ethical behavior, excellent customer service, as our core values clearly indicate. One small caveat. I noticed that the resolution is a bit one-sided in the sense that I'm all for protecting staff. I'm all for protecting council. Absolutely, you're doing work that we, the public, ask. But if staff abuses the public, what is our recourse? I see no recourse, no process, no civility. Should staff disrespect me? Not that that has happened with people in this room, but I have had it happen in the past where a member of staff, executive staff, lied directly to my face and insulted me multiple times. I had a mayor do it as well. So I think there is reason for it to have a component for the public. I don't think that's unreasonable. Two sides. Totally support civility. The next thing I want to say, and I didn't think I would come to this point, but I voted today. I'm even going to disclose publicly a vote on an item. I voted yes on BB. Yes, I'm a member of the Police Foundation. Yes, I'm a member of the Lions Club. Yes, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. It is very important to me that this council and the public understand I'm speaking purely as a citizen. However, I am informed by my service. And I believe it is the only logical conclusion at this point that we must vote yes on BB. And I say that purely as a citizen. And I actually told Chief Miller I would not come up here and say that, but I'm doing it because it's my last chance. So I think we need to support our public safety. And I think we need to support our city. And then I think staff has worked very hard with this council to try and find ways to make it work. And we as citizens, if this is what it's going to take, let's do this. And then let's make it work for the long term. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town, Seal Beach. A member of the Seal Beach Chamber, the Governmental Affairs Committee. And I want to talk about BB also. And I suggesting that everybody vote no because of what you got in front of you. I've gone to two of the meetings. And at the last meeting at the Ayers Hotel, they don't seem to think, they don't know that we don't put people they catch here in jail. We got to pay, pay-to-play jail. And I don't think that any of you have been here when we used to have that jail that was closed down. That jail was years ago and it was run by a private company. They had their own insurance. If they had a problem, which they did, they had two big problems. They had so many two big problems that they had to close that jail down because they were being sued. So here, years later, not too long ago, I think it was maybe four years ago, I do have a picture of my granddaughter and Mayor Veer Parpa was there where you spent $800,000 to redo that jail. And then there were notices sent out to the papers and to all of the judges, please send your, please send your people here to the jail in Seal Beach. Well, it doesn't pay for itself. The taxpayers of Seal Beach had to put in $541,000 last year. Does that mean anything to you, Hillary? Does that mean anything to you that all these people that are complaining about people out here running up and down the streets that they can't be put in our jail? It's a private jail. And even if you read the article, oh, they love it over there. And now we're going to have Facebook communication for them? Who's paying for that? Who's paying for that? So I realized that a lot of people in town don't understand that the jail that was used to be here was closed down. It was refurbished and now it's another private jail. So they're out there begging for people to come here and pay. Well, make them pay. Make them pay or close it down. And we got that jail through the redevelopment agency, if you remember. The redevelopment agency gave us something that, hey, it doesn't work. Used to be right across the street over here on the corner, the jail. I've been here a long time. And not only the jail, but also how money has been spent for the last seven years. And now I got to notice that you can't take taxpayers' money and use it for your election. City manager, Jill, you can't do that anymore. It's come down from the California Supreme Court, which she did in 2014. You weren't here yet? I don't think, but 2014. She took that taxpayers' money and then waited. We didn't get to see, she didn't give us the contracts until it was all over and everything had passed. And then we found out how much money she used.
Please, please direct your comments to the council.
$66,000. And she was reported. And then she got an attorney for $700 an hour. It's $27,000. So that was money that she shouldn't have been allowed to use. And now you can't. So I don't know about this letter that you put in our water bill, but she's in charge. You're supposed to represent me. Why am I up here talking about this? She's in charge. We're a charter city. And each one of you is supposed to represent the people in the district. And we haven't had any. Then we get to not only that, but what about Vicki with her police card where they're, all the forms and things that we were going to have, the new parking meter details? How much money did that cost to go to Florida? I mean, no, it was another $500, $600, $700,000? And you're in charge. Everybody that votes in this town, just remember, you vote for the person to represent you, to call down the city manager and the police chief, me too. Hashtag, who are we going for? So you want civility here because I'm calling out names. I have a public right First Amendment to call out names that I pay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Can we have the city attorney report, please?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you. Just wanted to give you an update and the public an update on the efforts to comply with the settlement agreement in the city's lawsuit challenging the I-405 improvement project. You'll recall there was a settlement agreement entered into between the city and Caltrans and OCTA several months ago. To date, in compliance with the agreement, we've received a payment of $280,000 approximately from OCTA in reimbursing attorney's fees and costs that the city incurred. And on October 10th, the city received a wire transfer of about $1.7 million from OCTA. And that's money designated in the settlement agreement to pay for a variety of repaving and improvement projects after the project is finished. And significantly, just recently, Caltrans put into their state highway operations plan the repaving of PCH from city limit to city limit as required by the settlement agreement, again, post-I-405 project. That's about, estimated to be about a $10 million project. And that was put into the state highway plan, which is the first step in getting funding for that project, again, as agreed in the settlement agreement. There's a number of other project-related tasks that remain underway between OCTA and the city staff, including a number of project elements up in the College Park East area of town that staff remains focused on in terms of making sure that OCTA and Caltrans comply with the settlement agreement elements. But we have now received all of the financial payments that are coming to the city. The remaining improvements are to be done by OCTA, and that's about a $2.5 million list of projects that the council approved back in 2015. So the agreement is being complied with and we're working with OCTA on the project. And just wanted to give that update to the council and the public.
Thank you. City manager report?
Yes, Mayor. Just have one item tonight. As the council knows, we've held three town hall meetings so far to educate the public on Measure BB. And really want to thank the community members who have invested their time in attending those meetings because it's really given our staff the opportunity to facilitate that meeting and provide factual information about the measure and why it's significantly important to Seal Beach. Especially want to thank several of our staff members who have come on their own personal time because they understand the significance of this ballot measure as well so that they have an opportunity to hear the presentation, to hear questions and comments that the residents are asking and statements that they're making. And I think that says a lot, a tribute to the dedication of our staff team. Also want to remind the public in terms of factual information, we have lots of information on our website on Measure BB. It's up on our homepage for those that aren't able to attend our community meetings. We have the PowerPoint presentation that's up there as well and would ask you to please contact staff if you hear things that are, especially statements like you heard earlier, call and ask us the questions so that we have the opportunity to address it. Having said that, we have our last and final town hall meeting, which is being Having said that, we have our last and final town hall meeting, which is being held next Monday, October 29th at 6:00 PM at Leisure World, I believe, in Clubhouse Four, Classroom Clubhouse Three? Okay. At 6:00 PM next Monday night. Would encourage the residents to attend and look forward to seeing you there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman, am I right?
I've attended several meetings this month, one for OCSD, and it was very interesting. And they are in the throes of planning a new administration building. And I got myself involved in that subcommittee. And I'm going to enjoy doing that and evaluating what they have, what they're planning. Another agency that I regularly attend is the Vector Control. I know you've heard me talk about that in the past. We made it through the summer quite well. There, you heard, read in the paper, I'm sure, there was one death this summer from a woman who lives in Tustin. And we were lucky that no one else, no other person got a severe case of West Nile virus. You know that you can get this virus and not know it. You can get it in all stages of intensity, including death. So we're lucky. We had no measured mosquitoes with West Nile virus. And, but some of the cities around us were not that lucky. As close as Garden Grove, there were several sightings and testing in Los Alamos. And we need to be careful all winter long. They lay eggs and they will sit in a, in a dry pot that had water in it until next year, until summer. And then they will reconstitute themselves and become flying mosquitoes. So make sure that you scrub out the white deposit on those little plates that you have under your flower pots. Get them clean because there's eggs in there. And they just sit and wait for us, our nice juicy blood. And so let's have another lucky year next summer and try and do everything that we can to keep those mosquitoes from biting us. And there's not only the West Nile virus, there's another one called Aedes egypti. And they are called ankle biters. So that's the new mosquito du jour. And if you have problems with those, we suggest you call the Vector Agency in Orange County. And they will send someone out immediately to take a look at what's going on in your yard and what's going on around your yard and how to take care of the deposits of larvae. So that's what I have to report on Vector. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers to start.
I attended three of the community meetings regarding the city's financial state and Measure BB. I just wanted to thank the City Manager and Director of Finance for a really nice presentation. And District Four gave good information to our residents and the rest of the city. And I know they appreciate it and it gave some good, good information. I attended a tour, small, very small tour, but a tour of the, the OC-35 project. It's a relocation of a water line for the I-405 project. This is one that we're going to have to pay for because we have to move our water line out of the right of way of the freeway. So we're, we're financing that. But anyway, I, they have tunneled under the freeway. And it's amazing because Caltrans only gave them a quarter of an inch of leeway on that, which is amazing to me that they, 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 they did that. But I just went and I had seen that as they were bringing it under the freeway, and I just went and they were just connecting up, reconnecting up to the old water line. So it's just about done. But very interesting, all the work that goes into just moving it out of the way for the freeway project to start. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Deaton?
Yeah, I would like to thank the staff also for the town hall meetings. I think that it is really, really important when it comes to making some voting decisions that it should be an educated decision and not just a knee jerk decision. I don't like taxes. Nobody likes taxes. Nobody wants taxes. However, we do want the services. So I thank every single person that has taken time to get educated. And if you still need a town hall session, we're going to have the one on October 29th at Leisure World, and it's also up on the website as was stated. Information is out there, and it's good. So please take a look at it before you vote. That's one thing. Then the other thing is I kind of want to bounce off of what Craig has said because it is election time. I've heard so much about our legal services and all the suing that goes on and how we never get our, our legal fees back, and it's just wasted money. I don't remember any case since I've been on the council that we have not gotten all of our legal fees back. But I want to talk about the OCTA one at the moment because I've heard a lot of criticism about the fact that we actually got into a lawsuit on OCTA. And what he just told you tonight is really important information. We got $1.7 million in cash for repavement projects that we would not have gotten had we not sued them. We got $2.5 million of improvements that were sitting on a shelf that nobody was addressing until we took them and, and started a lawsuit. There's a $10 million project for PCH that would not have been given to us without this. And we got every bit of our attorney fees and court costs back. So please don't let anybody tell you that that's not true because this is, you were just given the report tonight. So it's most unfortunate that one of the reasons that we started the lawsuit was to save the almond wall. And I'm sorry, Shelley, that we were unsuccessful at doing that. I know every single person here tried to get that too. But we got every other thing that we asked for, for the most part, I think, huh Craig? Most everything that we asked for, plus, in addition to that, all our court costs and all our attorney's fees back. So just setting the record straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, thank you. I attended the GRF Board meeting a few weeks ago, and I appreciate that each of the board members volunteers their time to help the community of Leisure World. And they really have their heart in it to make Leisure World a better place to live. I attended the Long Beach City College Hall of Fame event. That's where Commander Steve Bowles was inducted into the Long Beach City Hall of Fame. Congratulations, Commander Steve Bowles. And I'd like to thank Tim Kelsey and Steve Berger and Public Works for expanding the garden in Edison Park. There's 18, excuse me, 18 new plots at Edison Garden. And they're all rented out already and dropped the waiting list down, so it's a little more revenue for the city. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I just had a request from the City Manager Ingram for the local coastal plan update, if we can have that in the next meeting or two. And there's been a lot of talk about that, and I think an update would be apropos at this time. And that's all I have to say. We will move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members.
Mayor Vera Pappa? I believe we have a council item.
Oh, I'm sorry. The council item A, we'll go with that first, the City of Seal Beach Strategic Plan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As the council knows, we held our six-month strategic planning section, session on our three-year strategic plan last month. As the council knows, obviously, due to some of our budget challenges, one of the areas that the council made a decision to reduce funding for was the cost of paying for a facilitator to come and facilitate these meetings every six months, so twice a year with the council and the staff. And so our executive leadership team stepped up to the task since we didn't have the ability to hire a facilitator this time and led the last strategic planning session. So I want to take another opportunity publicly to congratulate my executive leadership team for stepping up to that task, three of which led, as all of you know, three of the discussion items. And I think we came out with basically a similar type product that this council has committed to over the last two years. So really proud of that effort and, and the day that we spent with all of you. And want to thank you, as I always do, for your commitment and your leadership in, in moving this forward because I think we've done a lot of work over the last two years to come up with a strategic plan, especially six-month objectives that keep your staff on task. And so we know what, what your vision is, what the priorities are in terms of developing our work plan. So what we have before you tonight, there's, as all of you know, there's an actual strategic planning report that's up on the website, which captures all of the discussions and all of the different discussions that we had that day. It's up there for the public as well on the website. It's also available in the city clerk's office if someone wants to come in and take a look at it. And what we have before you tonight then is just our six-month objectives. I'm not going to go through a lot of them. Obviously, none of the three-year goal change, none of the three-year goals changed, so all five of those goal areas stayed the same. There were six-month objectives that obviously changed based upon priority. The one thing I wanted to point out to you though, you'll see the footnote on most of the pages with an asterisk, contingent upon passage of Measure BB. So obviously, several of the six-month strategic planning objectives are contingent upon the outcome of the election next month. And those will be ongoing discussions that we'll have with the council. Either way, whether the measure passes or it doesn't pass, obviously, we've got significant discussions that we have in terms of our path to fiscal sustainability that will happen here in the near future. So I'm happy to address any questions the council might have on, on the update.
Any comments from the council?
No, I think we did a good job.
Yeah, I just want to ditto that. The team did a great job. Really, really, really good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to the consent calendar. We will, do we have a motion for items B through H?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. We will now move on. Public hearing. One of those for this next item. And we do have some new business. Item I is a resolution establishing a choose civility program and updating the City Council rules of procedure. That the City Council approved Resolution 6870, establishing a choose civility program and approving Council Policy 100-14, City of Seal Beach Civility Policy.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So as the council knows, and I'll bring your attention back to our six-month strategic planning objectives under the goal area of attracting, developing, compensating, and retaining quality staff, is a new objective regarding promoting civility and decorum through an outreach program. And as the council knows, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on this, and the significance that it, that it has to our staff team. And so as you'll note, several of them, I know they're, they plan on coming forward. Several of us are wearing shirts that were designed as part of, as part of this effort. And I really want to commend Robin Roberts, our city clerk, who's taken the lead on this item and feels really strongly about it, has done a significant amount of work on this, and we're really happy to present this to you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As, as Mayor Ingram just mentioned, we had a very lengthy discussion during the September 12 planning, strategic planning meeting where we talked about promoting civility and decorum through an outreach. And before I read the rest of my script here, I just want to mention, I heard in public comments that this seemed like a one-way request, and it's not. We're really wanting to reach out to the community and have an open dialogue about how to make the civility and decorum in the community and public meetings and as well as in City Hall, which is better for all people, all participants. So as part of the six-month objective and the, we came up with the promoting civility through decorum and outreach. This was an outcome after our SWOT analysis discussion where I had started the conversation and we all engaged in the conversation about the threats that we may have experienced during discussions. We've had a lot of incidences lately in City Hall. I know it goes back some time, but it's been increasing. There was one incident recently where a gentleman came to the counter and he was very upset. He was almost enraged by something that I believe he read on social media. It wasn't clear if it was an email or social media. But he was really upset. And so as I do, I do my best to de-escalate these conversations. And, and all the staff here, if you heard them at the counter, how hard they try to de-escalate it, you would be proud. You would be proud at how hard we try to help people, get them to calm down. So it gives us a better ability to really find out what we can do to assist them. Sometimes we can't, but we try. In this instance, it took me about 20 minutes to get the level and the tone to a dialogue that I could really understand what this resident needed. And this was with, where are you, Steve? Steve was in the office. He was with Dana, getting some, you know, dialogue, working on some items. And this was with a police officer and a gun. And it took us, and it took us a slant. So I just give you that as an example of how, how intense these events are that are happening, where people are coming in and they're so upset, and we try to help them. But we're really asking to find a way and find programs where we can reach out and get a level of civility in the conversation, and that will help both parties. So there are other examples, you know, and sometimes it's a parking ticket, sometimes it's a water meter misread, sometimes it's finances, sometimes it's a salary, you know, that are, sometimes it's salaries that we're making. But no matter what it is, we try to find a way to help them. But just for you and the public to know, people are coming in in levels just so much more distraught, enraged, and angry, and threatening. There's also been threatening lately as well at the public counter. So what we did after the council meeting is we got to work right away and we started a committee. The committee met and talked about different things that we could do as far as civility. We've also done research, and as you may know, it's kind of an epidemic. So we weren't the only ones to think of coming across civility. We found, in some of my research, I found that the United States Conference of Mayors have a civility accord. Some of this is mirrored after that. It's also mirrored after the City of Santa Monica. And then Sergeant Henderson was able to reach out to the Los Alamos School District, who actually had a policy on civility as well. So we've done, in a very short amount of time, a lot of research, pulled pieces of that information, and we're providing it to you here as the resolution and the policy. Some of the items we have up here is the civil principles. There's, there's some books, some education that can go up to 25 principles, but we felt it best to keep it short and sweet. And so as you can see up there, we have treat everyone courteously, listen to others respectfully, exercise self-control, give open-minded consideration to all viewpoints, focus on issues, and avoid personalizing debate. And I've found in my own professional experience, not just in the city but others, that really goes a long way in getting to solutions. Embrace respectful disagreement and dissentment as a democratic process, inherent components of an inclusive public process, and tools for forging sound decisions. So this policy is not to try to quiet anybody. We know what the First Amendment rights are, and we embrace it. As city clerk, I'm trained for transparency, to provide the public as much information as possible. And believe, view me, we work at it. This is the program. This is just the starting point. Council asked us to get this done in six months. We got it done right away. And some of the other items, when we're looking at civility, we came up with a tagline, and you can see it on our shirts, I think. I think this really does embrace Seal Beach. To me, it really feels like Seal Beach. And we have the Choose Civility, a wave of social change. So part of it is just looking at the bigger process, what's happening nationally, and the different civil discords that occur, local politics, national politics, and state politics, and finding a way to have dialogue and making it better. Knowing that the financial resources are tight, we plan on using existing resources and finding small ways to help start this wave of social change. One of it is just acknowledging it and having you acknowledge it by approving this resolution. There are other things that the city staff has discussed and will be working on. Some of that would be outreach, which staff already is doing now with the pop-up city halls, where we can be available so that when people have questions or concerns, I feel, I'm not on social media, but I feel and I hear that there's a lot that happens on social media. So we're trying to be excessive as possible. Access, accessible. Little nervous, you know, it happens. Accessible as possible, so that we can answer the questions and concerns that they have and give them most meaningful, you know, information when we know it's a problem, when we know there's questions about it. But if we don't know, we can't really help. So as much public outreach, knowing that we're lean staff, we want to commit to that. Some of the other items that we have is just for staff, doing luncheon learns and having different mentoring programs, where people that are dealing with more aggressive conversations, there's ways that we can help each other learn how to de-escalate. So I think that will go a long way. I also, one of the things we thought about is kind of stemming off the coffee chat idea, is having a civility, where maybe we offer tea at council chambers, it's not that expensive, and just engage the community in some of the ways that we feel like we can just have a more civil but democratic process. Couple, so I covered that one point. So with that, if there's any questions, there's a lot more to it. I mean, there's a lot of instances, but I don't want to belabor the points. I think that the council is aware of them. I did want the public to know that this isn't just a comment, although we've seen a lot of comments in our council chambers here during meetings. And I respect the fact that there's a First Amendment right for that. But it's intensifying now into city hall, where there's just such a lack of the civil discord, it's hard to put in words. But I see by my staff standing behind me, we're all experiencing it, and we're all urging you to just approve this resolution and let us begin to do what we can to promote civility in the City of Seal Beach.
Well, thank you. Before we go on, I'd like to just say that we appreciate all of your efforts and your responsiveness and accessibility. I think, I speak for all of us here, that we see that on a daily basis. It's not only when we need things, but when other people need things. Openness in the city hall is an asset for our city, and we really treasure that. And I think it's something that our residents treasure too. Not a lot of other cities have that. I challenge people to go to other cities, adjacent cities, and tell me where you're going to find, you know, city clerk openly, you know, everyday accessible, the police chief, the commanders, the finance director. I may go on and on and on, on a daily basis, and you can see those people, and you, you know, all of you here. And I appreciate that, and I know we appreciate, and I think our residents do, and we need to keep that small-town approach. And it's disturbing that, you know, we have residents that are rude, confrontational. We all get frustrated, we want things yesterday, and we understand that. The council is here to help and facilitate as much as we can. I know we've done that in the past. Some people know that more than others, but we are here to do that and work with you and the residents to get things done. So thank you again for all of your work. It's very, very much appreciated. And I'll pass it on to someone else who'd like to say a few words.
I admire everything that you've done. You've really taken a ball and run with it, and it looks like it's been a work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I want to thank you all too, because that was just a few weeks ago, and look at you guys, you all look great. So I know it's been rough for the last few years, but I also want to address what Seth brought up, because I don't think most of you were here when it happened to Seth. And, but it was a private meeting, it wasn't a public meeting that that happened. I'm not sure how to address that in this civility, but when I look at the resolution, Seth, it's saying treat everyone courteously, and everyone's being held to the same accountability. When I look at the council policy, it does seem to be more employee side. This is just one section of the council policy. I think if you read the council policy as a whole, you will see that it holds council members to the same standard and throughout. So I think that this is a great first step. Thank you so much, Robin, for taking it. We really need it. We need to get back to speaking to each other as one human being to another. I know a council candidate called me this week and said that they had been treated so rudely at the door that it was unbelievable. And I just think it's time that we all treat each other like human beings and not like objects. So this is a great start, and let's see if we can't take it to the next level and make Seal Beach be the first place everybody wants to come, because they know they can come here and have good civil discourse. So thank you for all of you for all your work.
Yeah, I've just echoed the same comments, that great job, Robin, and everyone getting this going so quickly. I grew up as a Catholic, where Jesus says, treat others as you treat yourself, and that's kind of what this civility is, in my opinion. And I know there's kind of an anti-government attitude, or a lot of division nationwide. Hopefully, we could be above that at Seal Beach and be civil with each other. I do want to thank all the city employees for all the work you do. Whenever I have a problem, you get it done right away, or you contact that person right away and respond. Just service is excellent. And I want you to remember that 98% of the people that don't complain because they're happy with the services. And I've been personally attacked several times at some council events, so I know what you go through. But thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the residents as well that come up and say positive things, because we really appreciate that of the council, and I think the city appreciates that. And Joyce, if you're still here, it'd be nice if you say a positive thing once in a while. Thanks. Thank you. Keep up the great work. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution 6870?
I'd like to make that motion, please, that we approve the resolution and thank the team for their work.
I'll second that. Please vote.
We could take third, fourth, and fifth.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, we will adjourn the city council to Monday, November 13th, 2018, at 5:30 to meet and close session. If deemed necessary, thank you all for attending.